I might have made a lot of bad decisions. And I have made bad decisions. But that's one thing. At the end of the day, we're gonna look back and say, you know, that's a win. And I don't have to be prepared to say that. The fun of this. Yep, yep, that's right, that's right. That just can run. But that's one thing, you know? That's one thing I think we can look back on and say, you know what? We did that right. Yes, sir. We got that right. That was our largest decision. I'm like, oh, did that mean that? Talk to me, you can hold that in your arms. Can you talk to me any time?
As the mayor of the town of Clayton, I'd like to call this regular town council meeting to order, ask you to stand forward the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing per the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the many blessings of this day, and we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton, for it's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Good evening, everybody. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Granis.
I'd like to remove item B under the consent agenda, the right-of-way easement, Ranch Road Extension, and place it under old business for just a few short questions.
All right, I have that noted. We're gonna remove that from the consent agenda and move it over to old one, old business.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask that we add under new business, a discussion for the celebration of Kendra Kenny Harrison.
So it'll be item E under A, new business.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any others? All right, if not, up next is a consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next, introductions and special presentations. We're gonna begin with the employee recognition.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Rich, Lee, Dolores, rest of staff. I'm James Blaylock, I'm the Utility Maintenance Superintendent with the Water and Sewer Preventative Maintenance Division. I'm here tonight to recognize two of my employees for some accomplishments. First, I'd like to recognize my instrumentation control technician, Mr. Chris Sneed. He's been with the town for four years, and he recently sat for and passed the Grade Three Collections Certification. Along with that, he holds a C Distribution, a Grade Two Maintenance Technologist Certification, as well as an Associate's Degree in Applied Science and Industrial Electricity. He's strived real hard to continue to grow in his knowledge of our lift stations. As you know, we have 28 of them. He also helps with the controls at the treatment plant and the new treatment plant when it's built. Chris is truly a big asset to our department and this town. Next up, some of y'all recognize him because he's been up here several times before, Mr. Dylan Carroll. He is the town's first utility maintenance mechanic two. What that means is, he's got to have several years of experience, hold a C Distribution, as well as a Grade Two Collections Certification. Dylan's been in the department for four years, he's been with the town for six, he holds a C Distribution and a Collections Four. So, at this time, I'd also like to thank y'all for approving that reclassification of the utility maintenance mechanics. That makes the town's job a little bit easier when it comes to keeping employees, because with the certifications comes knowledge, and obviously, they need to grow. If you're just staying stagnant, really doesn't do us any good. And, you know, water and sewer employees are hard to find. Nobody, nobody wants to play in sewer. They don't mind playing in water, but as we all know, that's not cool. So, thank you for your time, thank you for the opportunity, and I challenge y'all, when you see them out there working, thank them for what they do, because they truly are doing it because they want to be here.
Awesome. Well, we'll go ahead and get started with that. I want to thank y'all for what you do, James, you included. You did good work for the town of Clayton, and we appreciate it, you know? Everybody's got, like, their talent and their niche, you know? And what you bring to the table is important to the town of Clayton, and we appreciate it every day. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Thompson.
I just wanted to make sure we thank our staff, you know, our deputy managers and our manager for, and all of our department heads for advocating for career ladders for all of our employees. You know, I think when we were a small town, you know, you allocated positions, but you really didn't have a career ladder where people can move up and get financial incentives to do that. And I think we've seen, to me, I've seen a huge improvement in that area in the last year, and I look forward to continuing to improve career ladders in all the departments.
That's an excellent statement. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right. Up next will be the library tech grant update. Good evening.
Okay, I have to get this.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. I'm Joy Garrettson, Library Director, and I want to share with you about our Clayton Library Device Hub Tech Lending Program. So, back in April and May, the state library made, sorry, some new grant funds available under the CARES Act, and they were made to help libraries respond directly and immediately to community needs from COVID-19. Some of these needs overlapped with existing needs that we already had. As we know, a lot of people in our community do not have internet access at home, and so we were awarded a grant to help increase digital access for our patrons. We were awarded $12,061 to provide 15 Wi-Fi hotspots and five Chromebooks to lend in-house, five Chromebooks to lend out of house. So we'll be lending these things, starting hopefully in September. So, I wanted to tell you a little bit about the need in Clayton. So, 2,787 Clayton households don't have broadband internet access at home. 9.7% of our residents live in poverty. So, and then we have, in addition to those numbers of people who don't have broadband access at home, or may not have the funding to purchase regular internet access at home, we have a lot of families who are still staying distanced and away from public because of the threat of COVID-19. Should something happen in the future and we have to reduce hours again, we'll continue lending this technology. All of our staff is fully aware that one way that we did not meet public need while we were closed during the pandemic was that we weren't able to provide internet access to so many of our patrons who need it. So, this is how it's gonna work. We are, right now, working to adopt policies and procedures for lending the Wi-Fi hotspots and the laptops. They will be able to check them out, they will be able to access homework help, job applications, and healthcare information. We're actually gonna be placing links on the desktop to help guide people to job search sites, to help guide them to resume builders, to help them do free resume building. I don't know if you know this, but a lot of people come into the library to work on a resume. They Google search resume, how to do it, then they fill out a resume online with an online resume builder that will only let them print it out if they pay. And they don't know, you can just go into Word, you can open up that template, you can get that information for free. So we're gonna be able to provide some of these things for them for free. Some of that help that you might normally get in the library, but perhaps we're not open long enough for you to get that one-on-one help, you'll be able to check out this laptop from us, pull up a tutorial, learn how to fill out a resume, or create a resume, and so it'll be a great way to meet those needs. I've also spoken with NC Works, and we'll be presenting to their staff about this program so that staff can pass that word on to their people who come in and need some help.
Awesome.
We'll be giving training and resources to the patrons, like I mentioned, and then we'll also provide some of the devices in-house so that people can sit on our couches or at our tables and be a little more physically distanced than they're able to be at our front desks. They can also have a longer time on those laptops. As it is on our computer stations, you can only get an hour at a time, but with these laptops, they'll be able to check them out until we close in the evening, so they can have kind of a longer, more uninterrupted time, a little bit more private. As you know, we don't have any private study rooms in the library, so this will give people at least a little bit of an ability to distance from each other. So our timeline, the first thing we'll do is present this to council, which I'm doing to you right now, so exciting. We'll be developing internal and external policies, and we'll ask you to adopt those policies in a fee schedule. I'm anticipating that our fee schedule is just gonna be for replacement of lost or damaged items, but we'll be working on those to present to y'all after I get sign off from Rich and Dolores. Then we'll receive our technology, catalog it, process it, prepare for lending, then we'll be advertising this stuff, so once you see it coming up on our page, please share it out so our community knows about it. And then our dream, our hope is that we'll be able to begin lending in early September 2021, which is this year, so. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Granis.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. This, to me, is another example of what you and your team do to try to enhance the quality of what the library is about. And to do something like this, especially given the situation we're in with this current pandemic, this can only help students, and I want to thank you and your team for that.
Thank you. We're excited about it.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Yeah, for me, I think you're amazing. Everything you do, it's awesome. I did not know the library could get that creative, but I love that you are kind of focused in on the poverty-stricken part of our neighborhoods. That really does mean a lot, and I thank you so much, because it's really, it's really needed. Thank you.
We're walking in the footsteps of a number of good systems in our state. Durham County's got a great lending project, a number of libraries around have started really working on this stuff, so we're excited to be able to learn from them and the policies that they've had out, learn from the school systems and what they've done, it's gonna be good, so.
Yeah, I think it's pretty awesome, too, because so many businesses and industries are looking for good employees right now, and this is an opportunity for them to, you know, have a way to present themselves in a professional manner, and it be kind of easy, you know? Technology is a hurdle for a lot of people. I am right in the middle of that, so it's just wonderful that we have this resource right here in town that can help everybody with that, so we appreciate it.
Great, thanks.
Great work. Thank you. All right, so up next, under public hearing items 6A, 6B, and 6C, as it's presented on your agenda, is to continue on August the 16th of 2021, but we're gonna change that to continue to September 7th, 2021. All right, up next. I don't think we need a motion, I think we just needed to state it for the record, or do I need a motion?
Motion, please.
I do, I do need a motion.
No, no.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Bun. Up next, under old business, is the Ranch Road Extension. We had this pulled from the consent agenda, and Patrick, I'll let you lead off.
Good evening, I'm Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director. I guess I will make myself available for questions that Councilmember Granis or any others have.
Mr. Granis.
I was curious when this process will begin with respect to the land acquisition?
They're in the land acquisition phase currently.
Already, okay.
And this is part of, I know they're doing other acquisitions along the corridor, I don't know the exact status of this, but I believe they're in right-of-way, like, right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation between now and about the end of June, and I think it's scheduled either June or July of 2022 to begin construction, and construction, I think is about a 12-month process, based on the public available documents.
Okay. And, well, you answered the second question, are other properties involved, and yes, they are. And is this in any way tied to the NC 42 project?
Yes, this is tied to the Ranch Road Extension, so is it U 6223, which is extending NC 42 East and extending Ranch Road, and then realigning Little Creek Church Road and Ranch Road, and that's the extent of, and that's phase one, and I think in longer, often in the Campo, in the MTP and such, that will, is projected to extend all the way down to US, to the interchange of US 70, which is future Interstate 42.
And that's gonna come later, correct? That add, that piece of it?
Yes, I believe that's in the 2020, either '35 or 2045 Metropolitan Transportation Plan.
I think, I could be very wrong, but I was under the impression that 2029 was the date.
Yeah, okay, I should, I'm sorry, I should rephrase that. They put them in 10-year, 10-year windows, which means that it's in the allocation for the, the period between 2025 and 2035, and there are 2035 and 2045, just how they kind of phased the projects.
Okay. With that, I have no more questions, Mr. Mayor.
All right, any other questions or comments?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay. A motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We got a motion and approve and a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, up next, under new business, is to set a public hearing, code ordinance amendment, reduced parking requirements.
Good evening, members of council. This is a follow-up to your work session about two weeks ago, where there was a lot of people present talking about downtown parking, and there was a direction, staff received from you all, to proceed with making an initial byright reduction in downtown parking requirements, mindful that a study committee is in the process of being set up, that we'll look at it in more detail with maybe finer-grain tweaks and so on. So, we suggested that there be public hearing set for September 7th at your meeting to consider adopting that. We'll have the draft changes out soon, and we'll be carrying it to planning board later this month for comments prior to your public hearing.
Fantastic. Any questions or comments? Mr. Granis.
During our special session, we, we had discussed the possibility of having a task force created, and I was just curious if, where we are in that process.
We are, I had a discussion with Rich last week, we're in the process of culminating the names of those who wish to participate, reviewing those, selecting a task force, and hopefully, by our second meeting, be able to present the task force and look at the dates between now and the second meeting, when the task force can have its first meeting in the month of September.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to set a public hearing for September 7th.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to set a public hearing for September 7th, 2021. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, up next is the Campo and Town of Clayton Financial Participation Agreement, BRT Extension Study.
Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director. We, Campo is, has just recently kicked off a, the study of the Bus Rapid Transit Extension, which would go from Raleigh to Garner and Garner to Clayton, and as part of that, they had requested a financial participation by the town of Clayton in the study. That study is a $400,000 study looking, it's a feasibility analysis, looking at really the full feasibility of that, and different alternatives of alignment for that system. And so we are, staff is requesting approval from town council to have the interim town manager sign the agreement before you. And just a few other bits on the study, it should wrap up here at the end of June 2022 is when the alternative should be, the preferred alternative will be selected, and we should have the study back. Happy to answer any other questions that pertain to the study.
Okay. Questions or comments?
Is this part of the light rail study also?
So this is, they are separate, but they are, in both of those studies, they have realized that obviously these are two important future transportation investments that are gonna be going there, so there are elements in both the rail study and the bus study that look at how these may target different ridership and complement each other, so they're aware of these two things happening, and they're trying to work in concert, but they are two separate studies. So the study, the rail study, I know that Johnston County made a contribution to that study, I think that's somewhat similarly why Campo has looked to the town to see if we'd be willing to make a financial contribution towards this.
Anyone else? All right, Mr. Granis.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the funding of $15,000 for this project.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for authorization of the execution of the agreement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the prequalification bid for construction project policy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, Rich, and staff. My name is Sean Mizell, and I am the procurement contracts MWBE manager for the town of Clayton. I'm here tonight to discuss and inform you about the prequalification policy that we're looking to adopt here at the town of Clayton. So first of all, I would like to let you know, the purpose of this policy is to define a prequalification policy for evaluating and determining if potential bidders on a project have the skill, judgment, integrity, sufficient financial resources, and ability necessary to provide faithful performance of a contract for construction or repair per North Carolina General Statute 143-135.8. The policy is only applicable to specific construction projects, such as single prime, separate prime, or dual bidding method. There isn't a set amount that determines the use of the prequalification policy as defined in North Carolina General Statute 143-125, parentheses A1, parentheses 1, through Statute 143-128, parentheses A1, parentheses 3. The policy is also used in projects using construction manager at risk. The construction manager at risk must prequalify and accept bids from the first-tier subcontractors for all construction under the project as defined in North Carolina General Statute So it is necessary that if we're gonna do a construction manager at-risk project, that we have to have the prequalification policy in place. The prequalification policy cannot prequalify any contract subject to the Mini Brooks Act, including alternative delivery methods such as the CEMAR, the design-build, the design-build bridging, and the public-private partnership. bridging, and the public-private partnership under Article 3D of Chapter 143 of the North Carolina General Statutes. This policy is important to the Town of Clayton because it will allow the town to pre-qualify on projects that require expertise in specialized field, allow evaluation on past performance, qualifications of key personnel, any pending claims, litigation, and financial responsibility, and these are all important elements in choosing a responsible bidder. Staff recommends the approval of the policy to allow the town to pre-qualify bidders on complex construction repair projects and use of the contract, construction manager at-risk delivery method on certain construction and repair projects. The policy will allow the town to be in compliance with state law and consistent with other municipalities around the state, to include the Town of Apex, Town of Holly Springs, Town of Morrisville, City of Raleigh, Town of Cary, and the City of Asheville. Are there any questions at this time?
Awesome. Questions or comments, Mr. Grantis?
First of all, I'm really glad to see this. Um, and really, the only question I have is, is for the folks that are completing this process, what is the timeline typically that it would take for them to do that?
To, to be able to pre-qualify, it's usually seven days that the pre-qualification stays out advertised before, and then when they bring them back in, that's when the evaluation team would look at those before actually bidding out the construction contract.
And as far as the evaluation timeline, typically, what would that be?
No, it's two or three days with the evaluation team to, they'll have a form that they put together to actually, that actually includes the criteria for the evaluation.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve of the adoption of Resolution 2021-32.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval, or, um, excuse me, for the adoption of the Resolution 2021-32, is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the cemetery policy update.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council, and Mr. Capola, it's a pleasure to be with you. I am not Justin Pooley, but I am standing in for Justin, who is our Superintendent of Ground Maintenance, that's within our Property Maintenance Department, and I'd like to start out by, he could not be here this evening and expresses his regrets. Would like to thank him, Heather Post, and Mr. Nelligan, who take care of our cemeteries, make sure that all of our, um, cemetery policies stay up to date, and that our burials are done with a great amount of respect in taking care of our local cemeteries. We do have a few updates we would like to make, I'd like to present those to you. These are some revisions to our cemetery policies which are given, uh, to our customers when they are purchasing a grave or a marker, and we'd like to further define the restrictions and the guidance on the maintenance of the individual grave sites. In your packet, you will notice the cemetery, um, policy, which is given to every customer as stated, and we've also added a few items, uh, to this, which I'll go over with you, but we've also added a signature form on this so we can give a copy, because it is sometimes very difficult for folks to remember these types of things during this time. We also are planning to put out signage, appropriate signage out for updates about how we care for our cemeteries. Some of the things that you will see are some, uh, clarifications about the amount of time that the flowers can remain on the graves, and we have changed that, um, under that to be one week rather than two weeks. You'll see that some of the issues that we are having right now is additions that are being made to the grave sites, such as adding grass, mulch, edging, or fences, which are making it very difficult for us to be able to keep and maintain all of the grave sites. Also, we have added, um, not adding any additional bushes or permanent plantings, and then you'll see some, um, changes that we've made just in the opinion of our folks who are taking care of our grave sites as to when something has become sold, whether overgrown or displaced. And we'd like to bring that to you, um, as a, uh, resolution this evening.
All right, any questions or comments for staff? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bun.
Motion to approve Resolution 2021-33.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the resolution as presented, is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, up next under new business is a discussion, uh, of Kenny Harrison. Um, I asked this afternoon that this item be placed on the agenda because, as so many of you know, Clayton's very special, uh, comet, I'll call her, uh, is Kenny Harrison who, who achieved status of a silver medal in last night's Olympics. And I just wanna know from council's perspective what your ideas are, or if you would support some sort of celebration or proclamation or a combination of all for Kenny Harrison. Uh, you know, she has really, uh, put Clayton, North Carolina on the map in ways that no one else has ever been able to do, and I don't really know, um, the best way to go about this, I don't know, first of all, I wanna know what your thoughts are, support or otherwise, but, you know, if we need to formulate or have some sort of, uh, committee to help with this, you know, obviously, I think we would, if we do something, we, you know, we have to check with Kenny and her family to see dates and times and that kind of thing, but I just don't want this to go unnoticed, because this is historic for the Town of Clayton to have an Olympic gold medalist from your town, and she proudly, proudly calls Clayton home, I can tell you that. So, uh, with that, I'll turn it over for council for comments. Mr. Thompson.
I support it, and I think, you know, probably the, at a minimum, we should offer our facilities and any expertise of our teams to assist with facilitating a hometown celebration. You know, it may be that we don't have a facility for it, but, you know, there's other avenues we can take to maybe help facilitate something, so I think at a minimum that, you know, we need to offer our assistance and facilitate in some sort of a hometown celebration.
Awesome. Yes, sir.
How about just doing this out, you know, I, I support whatever we do, but in maybe conjunction with the high school, since we're working so closely with the high school now, maybe we could do something together.
Mm-hmm.
They've got the gymnasiums, the football field, but yeah, I support whatever, whatever we put together.
Awesome. Yeah, I like that partnership. Mr. Holder.
Definitely think we need a proclamation and that's presented to you here in the council.
Please, um, in case you didn't hear, all the way out there, he is completely in favor of definitely presenting, um, Kenny with a proclamation, uh, here in the chamber, uh, on behalf of the Town of Clayton.
Yeah, I agree too, um, proclamation, using our facilities, I agree with it all, I fully support it, absolutely.
So I guess then I'll just, Mr. Grantis?
Uh, I too, you know, in total agreement, uh, I, I do like the idea of, of maybe trying to combine, uh, with the high school in some way, shape, or fashion, proclamation I absolutely think is in order, yet that could conceivably be done separately depending upon what, what we do with the high school, and I, I don't know if any of you folks have followed her, but I can tell you that I have, and she was not able to qualify for the 2016 Olympics, which was a, a very, very upsetting time for her, obviously, but she is the current world record holder in the 100-yard hurdles, and even though she did not win the gold last night, she represented the United States, but more so, she totally represented Clayton, and when she was interviewed both last night by NBC and also today, uh, by Good Morning America, Clayton, North Carolina was right under her, and you can't say enough about that, you just can't, and, uh, this, this young lady has represented this community, uh, just infinitely well, infinitely, so we, we need to do something big.
I agree. So, um, I'm thinking maybe we could, um, Rich, get, have a little, uh, meeting with a few of, uh, members of the executive team, and maybe call in the principal at Clayton High, and, uh, see if we can have some sort of meeting to figure out if we can, if we can do some sort of, like, parade concept for her, uh, and let it end at Clayton High School somewhere on the, uh, football field or the track field or something like that, or if we just contain it to the track and field at Clayton High School, you know, totally where she got her start, but, um, I think if we could just formulate a meeting, and we can kinda go from there, you know, obviously, it's not gonna be anything that's gonna be done in the next 30 days, but I wanna go ahead and get this on our radar and get it on the calendar and get, uh, everybody working together so that we don't, you know, that we do something big like Mark Grantis suggests.
If I may, Mayor, recommend, I think it might be a good idea to try to get in touch with her communications person as, as expediently as possible.
Well, currently, we, we're working with her mama.
Okay.
So that's probably as close to the communication person as we can get, but I know what you're saying from a professional perspective, yes, but yeah, we're working, uh, as of today in trying to connect with her parents just to find out a little bit about scheduling and that kind of thing, uh, but we will keep everybody posted on that, yes.
Excellent.
All right, uh, anything else regarding that? Okay, then we're gonna move on to staff reports, and we will start with the town manager.
Couple quick up, excuse me, couple quick updates this evening, uh, with regards to some of the key personnel hires, I'm happy to say that we did have an HR director accept our position, she will begin on August 30th, I'll hold back on announcing her name to make sure everything's finalized with her current employer as of tomorrow, but, uh, we're extremely excited about bringing on, uh, that much-needed position, Catherine Whitley's been doing a phenomenal job trying to help us bridge this gap, but obviously, um, we need to have that position filled, so sooner than later, uh, August 30th will come, and, uh, we'll be able to move forward. Uh, in addition, we are doing, uh, second-round interviews for the plan director position this week, so hopefully coming out of that, we do have a, uh, clear person to make an offer to and can get that position filled, uh, targeting somebody to start, uh, approximately early September if possible at this point. Excuse me, uh, the last update I do have for you this evening, and I know it's a question that's come up several times, uh, here around town hall, both from, uh, internal and external stat, our, our participants, uh, right now, with the COVID numbers rising and, uh, some of the concerns surrounding the Delta variant, we are gonna be looking to revise our current protocols, um, essentially, we will be looking to reinstate the mask policy regarding staff, uh, all staff regardless of vaccination status, as well as public entering the building. Uh, as you all know, we have a duty to protect our employers, or our employees as the employer, uh, as well as wanna make sure, um, you know, unfortunate incidents that we've dealt with here, uh, over the past few months and year, with losing some of our, uh, some of our coworkers, uh, to the COVID, uh, pandemic, um, we're just trying to do our part to make sure that we can protect everybody on our end, so, uh, effectively tomorrow, we will be submitting, sending out revised protocols that, uh, will require masks by all, all staff as well as the public entering our public facilities, more details to come, but just wanted to make sure you are aware of that.
Questions or comments? All right, thank you, Rich. Uh, town attorney?
Uh, no report tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Town clerk?
No reports, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other staff? All right, I'll now open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record.
I would.
Yes, ma'am, please step forward and state your name for the record.
May I take the mask off? Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to have this time to speak. My name is Diana Goss. Um, I'm here today, but first I would like to, uh, recognize Rick Capolo, if I'm saying his name right, the deputy town manager, and Jim Colley, the attorney, and the distinguished members here, thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name is Diana Goss, I'm the wife of Leroy Goss. My husband and I, we had the pleasure of moving here to Clayton a year ago, by the way, of a small town called Whiteville, North Carolina, and I'm sorry, I'm nervous.
It's all right.
I would like to say that I love the town of Clayton, and the people here are very friendly, um, and I just love the small hometown feel and, uh, the outdoor activities downtown and the safety that Clayton provides. However, I am here to bring to your attention some grievances that I have with, along with many of the other residents in my community. I live in the Ashcroft subdivision, and my home is located at the corner of Greenview and Atwood, and directly behind my home, um, Providence Construction Company is building a new phase. Um, I went on their website, and their website states that we're a people's company, we take pride in developing projects done right. However, this is not the experience that seven of the residents and myself is having in Ash, um, in Ashcroft subdivision. I wanna show you a chart, and I don't know if you all can see it, but can I, am I allowed to move up a little closer?
Um, actually, if you could give that to the town clerk and let her pass the photograph so I can keep you on the microphone?
Yes, so just let me tell you.
Okay.
Okay, we had the, I think he's the head engineer to Josh to come out to, um, Ashcroft. Um, the, here, if you see right here, this is my property, and my property go, and this is Providence, I guess, what they own, but my property goes all the way up here, but when it gets here, there is an illegal sidewalk, and the first mailbox is on my property. Okay, so I'd like to show this to you. Thank you. Last, I think it was the last meeting that was held here, one of my neighbors came, his name was Ken, he, uh, lives right next to, door to me, he is a former developer and, um, builder, and had it not been for Ken, we wouldn't have known what we needed to do to solve this problem here. Um, no one has approached us to tell us what's gonna be done about this, um, we have, uh, houses that are, whenever I first moved in Ashcroft, all the land was level, behind me is an embankment or a mound or whatever you wanna call it, eight feet tall, and I stand a chance of erosion and my backyard being flooded. All seven families are concerned about the problem in Ashcroft, and again, no one has come and spoken to us, asked permission, that it's just, and what I call, an illegal grab of land, they have taken our land, and we're quite upset and angry about it. Um, um, like I said, they, their statement is that, uh, we take pride in developing projects that are done correctly. I have talked to, uh, three men who came out. I have talked to three men, a Ken Gavitt, a Matt Bun, and a Nick Keely. They were very polite, very kind, and they made these promises that everything would be rectified. And again, these were just men that I would just run down and, you know, wave down and stop and ask them to, you know, to tell me what, what is going to be done about how my land has been taken from me. At the first mailbox, people can actually stand at that mailbox and look in my house. In fact, my husband, he measured the land, and it's 10 feet from the illegal sidewalk that is on my property, where people can look in my home. Now, I don't know who the owners of the outfit is, but I know that that was, that would not be anything that they would tolerate in their, at their home or their land. And I just want to let you know that we are asking for you to step in, whatever you can do to help the seven residents that live in Ashcroft, we're asking for your help. And I just want to end this with, and I know it's not Sunday school, but end it with a little Bible story, if you don't mind. This is in Luke 18:1. It says, "The parable of the persistent widow," verse 18. Then Jesus told the disciples a parable to show them that they should always pray and not give up. He said, "In a certain town there was a judge who neither feared God nor cared about what people thought. And there was a widow in that town who kept coming to him with a plea, 'Grant me justice against my adversary.'" For some time he refused, but finally he said to himself, "Even though I don't fear God or care about what people think, yet because this widow keeps bothering me, I will see that she gets justice." So I'm here today, I stand in the place, spiritually speaking, of that widow, and I ask you, the distinguished body here at the town of Clayton, if you could do whatever you can to help us. Now, the developer who, who is retired that lives right next door to me, he said that if I were you, I would want them to tear up the concrete that they built on your sidewalk and remove that mailbox. And I'm sure each one of you would do the same thing. So I'm asking you to intervene, because as this widow, I'm going to keep coming, I'm going to be persistent, and I'm going to stand, because this is our retirement home. I'm a retired, I retired in June, 43 years, as a kindergarten school teacher, and I'm going to keep coming until I get justice. So thank you for hearing me today.
You're very welcome, and that was an awesome presentation. And I have had the privilege and the honor of being the mayor for this town for 18 years, and no one has ever presented their story and their case quite the way that you have tonight.
Thank you.
And it's refreshing, because we up here know what it's like to be frustrated.
Yes.
You know, but cool heads prevail, and your demeanor and your purpose-driven presentation will not go unnoticed. And I won't speak for this council, but they can have their own comments, but I think we can get our staff to look into this, to see how we can help the residents, and what exactly is going on, and how it could be justified or corrected.
Thank you so much, I do appreciate it. Have a good evening, everyone.
Anyone else? Mr. Capola, I mean, Mr. Bun?
I was going to ask Rich, he has some insight to speak on this.
Yeah, first of all, Mr. Goss, appreciate you coming out this evening, and thank you for your service. Want to make sure that we do get your contact information, if you don't mind filling out the form that should be on the lectern there. Also, Chief Barbie slash deputy interim, or interim deputy manager, Barbie, we are aware of this situation. Joshua has gotten us up to speed. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here this evening, but we do have at least a little bit of information there with regard to some solutions that have been proposed by the developer. I believe they are working their way through our normal processes, but we do want to make sure that we get your contact info, and we can get you up to speed, and once we do a little bit more digging on our end. But I will say that we will definitely follow this, as obviously, the infrastructure is the town's concern as well, so we will certainly follow up with you. But let's just make sure that you get Lee's card, as well as, if you can write my number on the back as well.
Thank you very much.
So is there a spot on the podium that she needs to fill out her contact information? Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak? All right, if not, I'll turn it over to council for comments. Mr. Grantis?
I just wanted to remind the council, and also folks that might be tuning in in the audience this evening, that tomorrow evening, we have an American Disabilities Act forum here in the council chambers, and that will be at 6 o'clock. And certainly invite everyone to come out and provide their input with respect to what we're trying to do with respect to future compliance and, and construction.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
I just wanted to provide an update for those watching or here that may have heard some comments in the past about the chickens in our community garden. And let those that are interested, you know, I heard some misinformation last week. Somebody said that we had voted against them, and that's not the case. We've not had any such vote against chickens. And in fact, we've had a lot of discussion among staff and with our manager, and we're working to see what we can do, and what, what the appetite is at the council to try to come to a solution to help that out. So just wanted to make sure that that was on the record, that that's not something that's been forgotten or ignored.
All right, anyone else? All right, perfect. Well, if there's no other business to come before this council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, good night.